Oh.
It's not on there? Which one?
No, I didn't get updated because of the...
Oh, because that's me.
I think nothing was gone.
Which one is that? That's me. It just added one thing.
Okay, we have them all?
No, it is, except for it's missing one.
Are we up?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Follow me in the order. It's Tuesday, January 30, 2018.
I stand. I stand. But they took it off anyway.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yours has... Yours has... There were one on the file. I didn't update your file.
Okay, minutes or reports received and filed?
None.
None? Good. Uh, committee lays on reports, upcoming meetings and events.
Uh, let me get back out of here. I was looking at the notes for today's meeting. Are you going to the pre-bid meeting for the Russellville? Okay. I probably won't mess with it if you're gonna be up there. Uh, I'm gonna meet with the city about this all waste, household hazardous waste project. Lauren, that used to take care of that, has taken another job and moved on, so I'm not sure what they're wanting to do with it. I'll let you know. Coke County Communities Thursday morning, Coke County Extension Annual Dinner Thursday night, East Side Business Association Friday morning, and then we've also got the MSP
Yep.
thing at City Hall. And then there's an Athletic Events Club fundraiser for the Convention Visitors Bureau Friday night at the Eagles. They might still have tickets if you want to go. It's usually a pretty good time and fried chicken dinner, so I think that's it. Oh, Super Bowl Sunday and Monday's holiday, right?
It is if you're self-employed.
Do you wanna throw that?
I've tried it. It still never works. It wasn't a motion.
I don't have anything else besides what Jeff mentioned, so...
Yeah, I got that. Uh, Friday and Saturday, supposed to be a CAP Region Leadership Conference down at the lake. I think I'm gonna regret on that. And then Sunday, the American Legion's doing a Patriots Day for Super Bowl because they're boycotting the NFL. So anybody who wants to go out, American Legion, they can do that. And I think that's all I got. Commission comments, any bids and contracts, unfinished business, new business accounts payable reviewed?
I didn't ask for approval of accounts payable pending review, and Jeff, you do have one in there.
I have the way of approval of accounts payable pending review.
I second. All in favor?
Uh, aye.
Abstain.
Jeff abstain.
Okay. Uh, signing of the CoStar License Agreement for the Assessors Office.
This was one that you guys punted the last time. It, um, one, needing a transfer, and two, you want to review it a little bit more, maybe?
Yeah, I didn't find out a whole lot more about it.
Okay.
I think we're just gonna move with it. It is a little more than we planned, but...
Okay.
All right, I move that we sign the CoStar License Agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You got a transfer with that?
Yes, right on top.
Okay.
Well, that was quick, Chris.
Yep. Sorry we made you come over here, Chris.
You had two other contracts on the list.
Oh, do you? Okay.
All right.
Get it all in one day.
Hadn't gotten that far yet.
What do you wanna do there?
Yeah, let's do those.
Let's do the signing of Newman, Conley and Ruth Agreement.
Here's the agreement. I know Jill has reviewed it and, um...
Just for professional services, Chris?
Correct.
Same way with the non-company?
Correct.
There's a not to exceed on this one, and I'm pretty sure there is on the other one, too.
I move that we sign the agreement with Newman, Conley and Ruth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, signing of the non-company agreement.
Questions?
No.
Not to exceed on that one, too, or is it just an hourly, or?
There's not to exceed on it also.
I move that we sign the agreement with the non-company.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Over the weekend, I received the month-to-month contract on the clear base, and I'm reviewing that right now, and I'll send it up sometime today.
Okay.
I think Jennifer got a copy also, so she might have sent that to you.
I understand, but she may have.
I'll send this up today.
Okay. All right, thanks, Chris.
Okay. And we'll go back to EMS Equipment Bid Discussion.
So, doing some, are getting ready to, or would like to do some bids for our capital budget. Five items at this time that we talked about during budget time to start the bid process. And I have specs. Can you answer questions on any of those?
What was the last one we had that came up?
Hand heavy.
Okay.
So I've got scoop stretchers, video laryngoscopes, Slishman traction splints, medical bags, surface sterilizer, and then we've also got Elk Lift Cushion and the Hand Heavy System.
So, you're gonna have to help us here a little bit because we're not...
I brought pictures.
We're not in that field, and so...
I was gonna say, just name off one, we can talk about it later on next.
So, the Elk Lift Cushion, I mean, I think that's probably the only system that's out there that does that kind of a thing?
Yes, so what that is, is a larger patient on the ground, obviously people not having handles. It's very difficult to lift them without injuring them further. Most patients in that situation come with other problems, such as shoulder problems. That'd be typically our pickup point.
Right.
We have other devices that we use to minimize the strain on the patients and the EMTs and medics. What this does, it's essentially an airbag-like system that we place underneath them, and it lifts them from the bottom up without having to yank and pull on a patient. We're looking at getting one of those and carrying it on a supervisor vehicle.
Okay.
That's under the bid limit, but that's just needing permission to move forward with that one.
I'm fine with that one.
Yeah.
We just had one of those going into QRV.
Yes, sir.
I think part of my problem with it was we got them other ventilators, but then we have special training people gotta go through to use the ventilators, and that was really never brought up when we approved them. I don't recall it, and now we're sitting there with ventilators that can't be used because we don't have people going through it.
It's not that they can't be used, it's that we're not using them to their potential. Um, we are utilizing the ventilators multiple times each month, but we're doing that with... There's different levels of, I say different levels, it's really not a whole lot of different levels other than EMT paramedic. There's also a critical care paramedic certification that it really drills down into more higher acuity patients and helps you treat your patients a little bit better. That's where that conversation came from. Using ventilators, the way that we're using them now is we're utilizing them for inter-facility transfers. We have numerous training sessions on them. We brought in guest instructors to talk really about the ins and the outs. So there's really just more education available that really would help the paramedics here to utilize them to their full potential and be able to troubleshoot more to understand what's going on with the patient. Ventilators are a very complex piece of equipment. It's not just moving air in and out. It's about maintaining blood gases, maintaining your patient status. You know, you can over-ventilate somebody just as much as you can under-ventilate somebody, adjusting the volume with it, the oxygen level, everything that goes along with it to keep their numbers in check. So we have training on the basic use of that. We've, I'm not gonna say that we're at the bare minimum. We're above the bare minimum level of using the ventilators, but being able to use them and have a better understanding to better treat, better anticipate what's going on, that's where that critical care piece comes into play. We are doing critical care transports. It's just one of those, having somebody, or a few people actually, on staff to be able to really dig deeper into patient care is very beneficial, and that's where that comes into. It's not that they're not being used, it's that we're not using them to the potential which we could. And also, having that, having that higher level of training is beneficial for everybody.
I think that's what got us. We got an email from Jerry. He said we, he recommended we get rid of them since we're not using them.
And it kind of goes on to that. It kind of goes on to that, yeah, we're using them, yeah, we're trained, but to be able to better ourselves, it's better to progress training. And we don't, anyone in this line of work, even in law enforcement, any public safety, training doesn't stop whenever you get the license. So being able to continue that and learn more, you know, this is, that ventilators, they're something new to us, and we are using them. We're using them...
So we bought them and they just sent them to us and didn't send anybody to get us training, or?
No, we didn't pay for any training, but we've, we've had probably three or four different ventilator courses. But none of those come with a, those are really, I'm not gonna say basic courses. They're a little bit more advanced, but the entire critical care curriculum is really derivative by around the ventilators and things of that sort.
So the question for me is, I mean, what classifies a critical care patient? And, I mean, how many times are we seeing those in a month, in a year, where we would really use, utilize that? And I mean, if not everybody's trained, then, you know, it's kind of a moot point.
Kind of like an auto mechanic. I mean, you could have a mechanic, and then you could have someone who's a certified something mechanic.
Right.
That's kind of where you're looking at with, with the paramedic. I mean, we're all, you know, there's EMTs and paramedics, but there's ways to have more advanced paramedics, and that's where that critical care certification comes into play. And that ventilator piece is more of a critical care, so we're providing that training to get people up to date and up to speed on the ventilators, but to be able to give them a little bit more advanced training, so where they're a little bit more comfortable and they're able to troubleshoot a little bit more, because typically, right now, what we're doing is back and forth to Columbia. Those are, that's probably about 95% of our ventilator transports. We haven't had any issues yet, knock on wood, but if any issues do arrive, we want that training in place so where they're more comfortable with it, and plus they're able to take better care of the people.
Right. So is it mainly critical care from one hospital to another hospital, or?
No, it's, even with a, really, the critical care piece looks a lot of medical. Trauma stuff is just pretty easy for us. I'm not gonna say it's not easy. Medical is a lot more intuitive thinking, okay? You're dealing with a lot of different organs and different systems that you're trying to maintain without having all the diagnostic tools in place for you to be able to properly diagnose your patient, know what you're treating. So this training, this more advanced training actually helps with that. Ventilators being, you know, what they are, are much more than just making someone breathe. I mean, there's a lot that goes into it.
I'm gonna simplify it even more. I mean, you brought up car mechanic. I'm gonna stay on that one. So if the mechanic has, somebody come in and wants some kind of diesel fuel pump system, and you don't have anybody that knows how to do it, you're losing that business. So are we losing transfers because of this? Are we not realizing some income? Because that was the thing that sold us on the ventilator was this will favor itself.
I'm not gonna look at it from an income standpoint. I'm gonna look at it from a patient care standpoint.
Okay, who's doing transfers if we don't do it?
And we are.
How are we doing it if we don't have somebody that knows how to run it, though?
We know how to run it, but we don't know how to use it to the potential. If I'm not going back to the car mechanic, I could work on your transmission, but if I'm not certified to work on my transmission, what happens if something goes wrong?
Then why are we transferring? Then if we're taking the risk?
I'm still a mechanic.
Not necessarily.
Okay, we do bring in the train, we're gonna, we're gonna do all of our paramedics, all of our EMTs?
No, so, so, we're not talking about certifying everybody. We're wanting to introduce this program to advance the education. That's where all that comes in. That's nothing to do with the capital piece. That's the critical care paramedic program. There's a lot of, not a lot of them around. But that's another certification that helps paramedics dig a little deeper into the pre-hospital medical field. So that's where that conversation came from. It's not about not being able to use the ventilators. It's about being able to treat your patient and help diagnose your patient better. It's advancing the education is what that is, and it's a better understanding of how they are affecting the patients that we treat. No, we're not losing revenue with it. However, we would like to be able to treat our patients a little bit better and understand a little bit more while we're using them. That's what we're looking at there.
So I guess the struggle for me is that, obviously, if we train one person, or we train two people, and those people aren't on an incident where it really requires, you know, that higher level of usage and being able to optimize the equipment, you know, how are we gonna get all the staff trained? Because obviously, not everybody's gonna be working at the same time.
So there's, there's some that have the certification now, and we're looking at spreading it across all the shifts. That was the original intent in last year's budget discussion with that.
So can we send somebody to the train, and they can come back and train the others, or?
Has to be a certified. Kind of like a paramedic program, you have to have a lot of stuff in place to be able to present it with the certification pieces.
So, there I go again. I mean, you know, I trained one this year. I trained one the next year. I mean, those people aren't working when we really need it.
That's why we're looking at spreading it across the shifts. So like I said, we already have a couple that have got it from previous employers or from previous trainings and classes that they went to. They're maintaining it, but it's just being able to really advance the service. You know, it kind of goes along with wanting to be that best service in the state. That's, education is a huge piece to that. But that's not what I'm up here to discuss.
Right. I know. We kind of got a little sidetracked, but, you know, it's... Well, that's we're talking about capital expenses, though. I mean, this kind of goes hand in hand.
Yeah, all the stuff that I'm talking about, to answer your question, one item requires additional training. I'm not gonna say that. Two items require additional training. One item requires additional certification.
We did Dale Cliff. What's next? You said you had a list. What's next on the list?
I do. The Hand Heavy is a sole source. That's a pediatric system. So currently, I'm not sure what you're looking at. The Hand Heavy system is a replacement for the way that we treat pediatric patients. Currently, we use a Broslow system. It's a very dated system. Um, there's proven flaws within that system, and it requires you to have to reference everything to a card, a length-based card to treat your pediatric patients. Hand Heavy system, why it's not new, but it's newer than Broslow, is a more advanced system that helps paramedics and EMTs better mesmerize, memorize the, uh, memorize the dosages and equipment utilized to treat pediatric patients. So this is a replacing of our pediatric system now and switching over to that. There's a lot of services. I know, I went down to Texas whenever I was down there. They'd switched over to it. New Orleans has switched over to it, Kansas City, St. Louis, a couple others in Missouri. There's a lot of transition to this, just not simply because they wanted to have the latest and greatest thing. It's proven to have the better treatment for pediatric patients. That's one of the most stressful calls that you can get as a pre-hospital care provider, is a pediatric patient. And you ask most paramedics and EMTs, hey, what are you gonna do in this case with a pediatric patient? Well, they don't, thankfully, they don't have those calls very frequently. You know, it's a, it's a high-risk, low-frequency type call that you're running into. And looking at, most of their answer is gonna be, I'm gonna reference a Broslow. Well, this system helps them have more of a memorized approach to treating pediatric patients. Included in the sole source bid that we obtained is the creator of the system, Dr. Antivi himself, will come down and certify the staff and six instructors to be able to continue that education. This is one that we can do in-house. We have to have a certified train-the-trainer course, and we'd be lucky enough to get the creator, Dr. Antivi, from Tallahassee, Florida, I think it's Tallahassee, somewhere in Florida, to come present that to us.
So obviously, you know, I've seen the Broslow out there and the Petty Pro and some of the other systems out there. So how many of these Hand heavies are we looking to purchase, and what's the unit cost on them?
Um, I've got an entire bid. I don't have the bid itself. I just have the number in front of me of 18, 852-87. And this is including about, I think, 15 bags, be one for each vehicle and a trainer. And this also includes the education piece and certifying course and all that.
So...
18,000, 252.
18,000, 852-87. I don't have the actual bid information. I just have the number.
Definitely.
So let's, how are we getting to the 15? I mean, obviously, you know, one for each vehicle, you say, I mean, but...
All ambulances, three SUVs, but it also...
Right, I mean, we got at least...
One being the van, we'd use that one for training.
We got at least one ambulance that we're not using at all, and that's a brand-new, um, transfer van.
They're using it right now, actually.
When we talked about the capital request, we had 11, 525 in there.
Yeah, so we, we looked at, and we can scale back to 14, honestly, but getting these systems in place, having one in each vehicles, you're not having to move them back and forth, and also outfitting the SUVs, because obviously, I've gone unseen first with a pediatric patient being able to initiate that care, and having one for training, so you don't have to take it off of a truck. We run into that with our cardiac monitors right now. But also, we, we got the certifying training course in there, too, which I think is only 3,000. I'm not sure what that... Like I said, I'd have to look at the actual quote.
What were the other systems you were talking about, Chris?
Um, well, obviously, the Broslow that Kevin had mentioned, and there was also a Petty Pro system that was out there, and...
Petty Pro's kind of similar to Broslow. It just puts it on a wristband. This is a whole different approach to it, and that's what, that's where the training is very important.
All right, what was the next one?
Next one is gonna be the surface sterilizer.
We're just gonna go through each one real first and then decide.
That's fine. Yeah, we can, yeah.
Next one's a surface sterilizer. So this is, I got some studies. We're looking at getting one of these. It's an ultraviolet germicidal irritation technique. So this is simply a fancy UV lamp you put in the back of the ambulance. It kills all of these, and it'll even sterilize Sam's office after the flu. Um, but I have studies and everything. This isn't something that's new. There's other services that use this. This is just a very affordable product that's portable. Essentially, how it works is you put it in the back of an ambulance for about 60 minutes, and it kills all the surface germs and bacteria and mold that are growing in the back of the ambulance. I'm not saying we have mold in our ambulances. I'm just saying, as we do clean between each patient, there's times where we miss it. There are studies that show just taking tests, you know, swabs from different parts of the ambulance and having bacteria grow in a dish, it'll amaze you. And you can spend as much time as you want in the back of an ambulance, but this is a very affordable disinfectant. We did only want one. We'd be able to move it from ambulance to ambulance, or you could even use it indoors. It's a UV sterilizing device. I have studies and a product guide here if you want to look at it.
Is it any of those?
Yeah, so I don't know that we have that on your list.
What was the cost on it?
Yeah.
It's like $900. Well, I don't know. We have a bid. We don't have a bid for it.
Is there multiple vendors out there that can bid something like that, or?
I think so. The one that I looked at that I pulled off was from our current medical supplier.
Okay, 'cause I didn't have that on the list either.
Okay.
I'll get one of those from a boy's room.
I'll rent it to you.
Maybe for your room. Definitely for Sam's room.
I just went somewhere else. I didn't know if it was some regular...
Well, especially now, I mean...
Right.
Jerry, Jerry's even now sick, too, and it's, every time somebody gets sick, we're just going around scrubbing the base and such. We're talking about borrowing that from our vendor to demo and put it in dispatch, because every dispatcher got sick.
Okay, what's next?
All right, next are medical bags. So our current medical bags that we have now, probably half of them, we've had longer than I've been employed at the ambulance service, even from CAP Region. The direct replacements for those are too small to where the new bags are busting at the seams because of the way that we have them stocked. We appointed a committee to try to revamp the bags to where we carry less equipment in them. These are our first-in bags. These are the bags, the blue ones that we take in with every patient contact that we have. We've eliminated equipment, unnecessary equipment, and still the bags are overpacked. It's just, it's the way that the bags are designed. Literally, Friday, I was on a call on High Street, and the EMT grabbed the bag out, and a medication fell out of the bag, broke on the sidewalk, and it was fully zipped. That's how the holes are. We're losing stuff falling out of the bags. That's what it is. So we looked at, one, the direct replacement for the design bags that we have now, and it's just, they're not set up very efficiently. So we looked at a medical bag that, we actually got four or five different models that we put to the staff to let them pick and choose which ones would benefit them, because they're the ones that are using it. We've, we found a design that works best for us. There's two different makers of it, of that particular design, so it would go to bid, and we'd like to replace all of our first-in bags that we have now with them. There's obviously much more expensive bags. There's obviously some cheaper bags that we looked at just from the process of this, but these are, bags are needing to be replaced. We can't just replace one. We'd have to replace all of them, because just the muscle memory of the medics knowing where their equipment is, and this is a lot of equipment that they're carrying in these bags. We looked at, like I said, lessening the equipment, repacking it, or wanting everything to be consistent. We don't want someone to get on one truck, and a certain drug or tool is located here, and now they have to go searching through it, and that takes time away from their patient.
So are we just buying the bag and we're gonna stock stuff in it?
Correct.
Okay.
And I think we talked about this a while back.
Yeah, I think we talked about it during budget.
So what's, what's our cost on each bag, roughly?
Yeah, I want to say they're between 3 and 350. I'm not sure what the, they...
What the hell of a bag.
Like I said, we haven't bid them, so we don't, we don't know. We just have ballpark numbers.
So do you have a reference that you want to bid?
Yeah, I've got, uh, I've got stacks if you want to see them, or I could point you to the bag.
So, I mean, when we put out a bid for that, it's gonna be this or equal, or?
Yeah.
What's the approximate lifetime of one of these bags?
These bags have a lifetime warranty.
Who's lifetime?
Which is, uh, five years?
We've gotten a lifetime out of the ones we have now. I mean, it's...
Yeah.
Literally, I could go get one and bring it up for...
Well, they've been there for over 10 years. That's good.
Yeah, I think that's...
You definitely got your money out of them.
That's pretty good.
The new ones that we bought to replace them, you haven't got your money out of them, because...
Were they 350, you're saying, these?
Yeah.
I don't want to oversimplify it, but I'm very picky about my bags when I'm going hunting. I still don't spend 350 a bag. This got 7,200 pockets in it and a bladder in there for me to put water in.
Air conditioner and heater, too?
Put cold water in there, could you?
Just teasing you.
You also have other people puke and throw up on your baggy, or some...
Uh, you been to deer camp with me?
I've got the invite.
Well, it's, I mean, it's just a lot for a bag, so...
Um, so if you're, if you're on Google right now, look at the Merit, M-E-R-E-T, Omni, O-M-N-I. I don't know if it's Pro or just Merit Omni, but there's a, that bag, and then there's equivalent to that that another vendor makes, because we just looked at the specs of it. So that's the type of bag we're looking at. It's just something that's a little bit modularized.
Okay.
Yeah.
These are the specs that I sent out, Jennifer.
Same here. M-E-R-T. Oh, there it is. Which one?
All in all, this is what the staff wants to work with. They felt comfortable with it. So I don't want to say here, this, you could use this bag. It's $50 cheaper. They're the ones who are using it. They're the ones who feel comfortable knowing how to grab stuff out and go at it. This isn't the latest, greatest Cadillac bag. This is just a...
Yeah, when mom and dad took me to get shoes, too. I went to the ones on the top shelf, and they smacked me in the head and said, no, you get down to these ones on sale right here.
These are about knee level.
So how come only 14 of those?
We wouldn't need one for training, per se.
Oh, you got, I said 12 ambulances and three other vehicles, so, right? Oh, you got, I said twelve ambulances and three other vehicles, so, right, so that's fifteen.
So, we could.
The other one was a training.
The other one we wanted to keep out for training.
So, fourteen of them at three fifty a pop, you're looking at forty-nine hundred, we had three thousand that we talked about in budget, everything's coming in way over.
Oh, we, we looked at removing some things to prioritize, and I could.
Okay, I was gonna say, if we're.
If you look, if you look at the big pool, we're gonna be under.
I'm, I'm okay with bidding that one, I mean, as long as we got it, or equal.
Those bags do need to be replaced.
Yeah, yeah, yes, they do.
But still. It's a lot for a bag.
Medical anything's are a lot for medical anything.
I mean, there's some on here for two forty, I don't know if it's the same one, it's a Merit Omni Pro, but I don't know what, what you're looking at, two forty to three fifteen.
Yeah. Gotta bid it, though.
All right, I might need one of those too, just for.
In case you get hurt.
Keep stuff up. Holding bottles, plastic bottles in place.
So, there's different, there's about endless amount of features you can do to this bag that you're looking at here, the bag itself, you're looking at just this right here, what you're seeing on the screen, is not two hundred and forty dollars, they're misguided, there's different add-ons to it that jack up the price, so.
Sure.
Each little, like the bag on the side that rolls out, the one on the end, the stuff inside, all of those are add-ons, so, this right here, the way that it's set up, it's probably literally over four hundred dollars, at least, probably closer to five. There's probably some fine print somewhere on this website that, that'll state that, each of those modules cost more.
I understand, it's.
So.
Okay, we get free shipping, so that's where.
There's not.
Well, yeah, but if he bought it local, he could pay tax, and we'd get some of it.
No, we don't do that.
All right, what's the next one?
Uh, let's see, you got video laryngoscopes. Is that what you have on yours, is next, video laryngoscope, so, laryngoscope is something that paramedics use, they put a blade, not necessarily a sharp blade, blade into a non-breathing patient's mouth, or a patient who needs an airway secured, visualize the vocal cords, and they're able to stick a tube into their trachea, this is an advanced skill, currently, we have manual laryngoscopes, that's where you're gonna see King Vision airway devices. These are a different technique, they're a video-operated, so currently, the provider gets pretty much nose to forehead, and they're looking literally down the, the patient's mouth to, to see their vocal cords, this allows a more visual and tactical way of, I'd say tactical, more tactile in, in performing the procedure, to where they're able to really visualize patients to our, what we call anterior, or more, their vocal cords are more to the front, where you can't see them with a direct visual laryngoscope, blah, 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 it's a tool that really helps you intubate the patient better, I can throw terms at you all day, but ultimately, it's a video laryngoscope, it would really improve first-pass intubations for patients who require an advanced airway, currently, we have all manual ones where you, like I said, have to look down there, this provides video literally on the device itself. This is a more, I mean, you're looking at technology, more and more of these services are, are carrying something equivalent to this, there's a couple, there's multiple vendors out there that are pretty competitive in this market, but this doesn't make our job, our job currently isn't impossible, but you look at intubation on first, first-look success rates, nation average, you're looking at about between sixty and seventy percent, with a device like this, it's up in the eighties to nineties, and that's being able to successfully complete the, the procedure itself, so, that's what we're looking at.
So, are these battery-powered, are they rechargeable, or?
Yes.
Which?
Retachable batteries.
Okay.
The same thing, you swap the batteries out, you have others on chargers.
Does the King make it a sole source?
No, we, the way that we worded it, there's a couple, the King was just, that's just an idea that we had, we found other vendors that are pretty comparative, as long as they need specs that we provided on that.
So, how many of those?
What'd you say, twelve?
No, what's on there, I'm sorry.
So, what kind of a maintenance, or, I mean, it's electronic, obviously, so, is there any?
Depending on the product that you went with, as far as the, there wouldn't per se be a maintenance agreement, I wouldn't envision, either be a warranty associated with it.
Okay.
There are disposable pieces to this, and they're really, I mean, you're looking at twenty, thirty dollars per blade, so twenty, thirty dollars per patient that you use it, so it's, it's the upfront cost that really, you're, you're looking at of the device itself, but there's disposable pieces that go onto it.
So, I mean, twenty, thirty dollars every time you use one on one patient?
That's actually pretty cheap.
Yeah.
If we get to bill them sixty dollars to use it, right?
Yeah, I mean, if we can bill them fifty bucks for it, I mean.
Well, you're, you're, if you're using this device, the acuity of the patient's much higher, you're in a higher billing bracket.
Would you use this every time you intubate somebody, or just the patients that are more difficult?
Yes. Here's, here's the deal, you can, after going through that training, you can kind of look at people's anatomy, and you can tell if they're gonna be difficult or not, so, patients that you anticipate to be difficult, I'm sure you use it on the first pass, there's gonna be other paramedics who are kind of old-school, who don't like technology, and they, they always did it this way, and they'd use that until it failed, and then switch to the other piece, so, it's, it more or less makes a preference, don't look at the thirty dollars piece, I mean, this, you're not gonna, that's, that's not really a.
So, is there different blades for different-sized people too, or?
Yeah.
Like infants, toddlers, kids?
Yes.
Adults?
Yes.
So, you're gonna have to have three different blades for each device, or?
And all that's, I think was included in, in that ballpark number right there.
Okay, what you got next?
Got traction splints.
Traction splints, so those are, the traction splints that we carry now, the, they're the older model type, I don't know if anyone's seen some with a broken leg before, but it's a big device that literally pulls your leg down, they're huge pieces of equipment, the newer type traction splint is a more compact, easier-to-use piece of equipment, it's, it's mainly, this is, this is meant just kind of moving into the newer age of a splint for a broken leg, that's what a traction splint is, mainly for the, the broken femur, where your bone, you break your bone, and your femur's doing this, it pulls it to do this, so, this is just a, it's worse if it happens to you, I guess, I mean.
You don't have to show me any pictures.
We were out in the sub, we were talking to their pharmacist mate, and that happened, what they, they came from Groton to Pearl Harbor, and they had a sailor who basically broke his leg, and, and they're underwater, you're not gonna surface, so that's what he put the splint on.
I've, I've personally been on calls where a patient needed to go by helicopter, but we couldn't fit him in the helicopter because of that big splint that we have, we had on him, yeah, and it was down in Mary's home, where it wasn't a very easy drive up the Columbia.
So, are we gonna get rid of our other splints then, or?
We would, this would be a, probably by attrition, but we'd, we'd look at kind of stuff, I don't think these are very, I haven't Googled the price or anything to see what the, the cost would be, but we, we'd look at slowly phasing those in to replace the current devices that we have now.
Okay.
Scoop stretchers. This is looking at replacing the old metal scoop stretchers that we have now, I want to say there's about five of them left in the fleet, this is replacing them with a poly material, which we, we have most of our trucks with, it's just making them all the same, taking those cold metal boards off, putting these, they're more comfortable for the patient, they're x-ray translucent, so if they go to x-ray, they don't have to be removed, the latches on some of the scoop stretchers are almost non-functional in, in a manner, we, we go through as much grease as we can to keep them greased, but I think they just reached their end of life, so we're looking at replacing, I want to say in the budget, they looked at eleven, I think we're down to five, so, it's, those being about, you know, anywhere from eight hundred dollars to a thousand dollars, depending where the bids come in, a piece.
So, these are kind of a stretcher that comes apart, you slide in place, yeah, I'm looking at it, so.
Yeah, it's this thing right here.
And you can slide it underneath the person, and?
Yep, works great for people who, like, with a hurt hip, where you don't have to move them, you literally just put it together and pick them up, phenomenal, probably one of the most widely-used pieces of equipment on the truck, other than the cot.
So, we got five old ones that we need to switch out?
Yeah, there's other, there's other models that are much more expensive, but we've grown to like these, and they seem to be pretty.
They work with our cots?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, like I said, we, we have most of these now, we just need to replace the metal version of these that are end-of-life.
Okay, is that it?
I think so.
What did we budget for capital, then, I mean, that's kind of where I'm gonna start at, I'm gonna work backwards.
Hundred and ten, one fifty.
So, did you already do your homework on that, is this all?
So, I've got a little spreadsheet together, because we looked at medical equipment and radios, so the things that were originally in that budget, the child restraint, we, we chose that, that eight thousand dollars better advocate for this equipment, which we've kind of prioritized.
So, you're gonna get rid of that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Stair chairs, again, we chose that to take a.
I think y'all were gonna replace that with those scoop?
Yeah.
Scoop stretchers.
Well, scoop stretchers, we had on there, we had eleven, but we, we only need five.
Okay, so you went from eleven to five. But also, I think that's what the stair chairs came off, you're looking at doing the scoop stretchers in place of those, so that's gone, and the radio equipment?
That'll be a different discussion, but yes, we will need to upgrade our radio equipment.
You got reverse nine-one-one, is that coming?
So, you're not gonna do the child restraint system?
Um, not that model, the model that we have now, we, we found feasible to work for us.
So, we got something already, or you're gonna come back?
We already have something, it's called a P D Mate, it fits onto the cot, we found that this particular piece, as it was appealing, and had some better ratings, didn't work well with our cots, so we chose to forego it.
Okay, so we're not gonna do that this year?
Correct.
We won't be buying any new pediatric restraints, or we got enough?
We have enough, yes.
Okay.
Unless one breaks, and we'll just buy it.
So, we have the stair chairs, and then the child restraint that came off, and then the scoop stretchers was reduced, so you need five, and you say there are about a thousand?
That deluxe advanced airway, I'm not sure what that is, I think that might, the, because you have the King Vision airway devices up above, I'm not sure where that deluxe advanced airway one goes.
Okay, we'll take it on.
But I could, depending on where those bids come in, on the worksheet that I'm messing with, I, I think we're gonna be under the, I know we're gonna be under that one-ten, one-fifty number.
How long, I guess, are, some of these are gonna have to be replaced again, in probably two years, I'll have something else that's new and better, that's always my concern, and we've got stuff that can suffice for now, and we can keep on keeping on, and then also, here in a couple months, you'll find something that y'all want, but.
So.
Kind of like when you get your allowance, you got your five dollars that week, and, you know, you buy a bag of candy, you're done on Monday.
So, nothing on here is replacing anything acutely, the video laryngoscopes, we've, we've had manual laryngoscopes forever, we're looking at introducing this system.
That's the airway device one?
Correct, the Slesman traction splints are replacing a traction splint that we've had for, you know, this, this type of traction splint's been used for as long as I could been in the business, not, not long, in only fifteen years.
Now, if you know you're gonna be, you're gonna have to transfer someone in a helicopter, if we got one that you could use for that, is that something that can be slowly, I guess, replaced too, do a few of them here and there, instead of doing all of them at once, or is this something that we have to have uniform across the?
It, it, this is one of the, you talk about traction splints, we, we'd slowly phase that in, I mean, that's just gonna come with training as well?
I mean, just in general, the traction splint is one of them, it's a, that's a smaller dollar one, too, same with, I mean, a lot of them, the first-in bags definitely need be replaced, and that's a smaller dollar item, but the airway devices, you know, it's a bigger dollar one.
That, that is, and that's going to help improve, again, we're looking at first-look intubation success rate, and that's improving that, and there's, there's some patients where literally we cannot perform that procedure, and this would enable us to, because this tool really, the way that it works, really benefits you to where you're not doing trauma to the patient to trying to get an airway to them, I know that's a bigger dollar one, that's, that's more of a.
Things like, when you're saving lives, that's, that's important.
There's, there's some physicians, you go in, and they don't even, they don't even get the manual stuff out, they go right to the much more expensive than what we're presenting, similar item that they're, they're going for to, to get that airway for a patient, again, if they're, if we're needing to do that procedure, it's not something that we're wanting to spend a whole lot of time with. The, the surface sterilizer, and that, that as well, be one of those, we've never had one of those before, there's a lot of benefit that goes with it, especially with trying to, you know, maintain a sterile working environment, and a not-so-sterile line of work, but, like I said, I've got reviews, studies and everything that, that show the benefits to it, and it really does work, the guy came out and demoed it, and this is just a more affordable piece, this is, I think, I want to say around nine hundred dollars, I think is what I saw on the website.
I'm, I'm just thinking.
You could use it anywhere.
Like, like on some of our sheriff's cars, I mean, you know, God knows.
Put it in there for an hour.
What all you got in a bag if it, uh, my office.
Jeff's kitchen room.
But I mean, if, if, if we can use it for other stuff, too, that.
So, they'll probably be using it quite a bit.
Yeah, after every patient, yeah.
Well, it wouldn't be every patient, because it takes an hour, I think more or less, because we still, we still spray the chemical, we wipe everything down, but, I mean, almost you look at, like, if you had a night shift, moving this from off-duty truck to off-duty truck, you really make sure it's sterilized, about these, I see a lot of hours you get ticked up on that thing, especially during cold flu season. Put it in my office every night. The hand-heavy piece, I think that, that's a very important purchase as well, honestly, we, could we survive with fourteen systems, yes, I mean, we're, we're looking at just not having to do any switching around, if we're wanting to save some money, we can, we can go from fifteen to fourteen systems, but.
And I guess, I guess the thing that I struggle with, and I, I understand what, what you guys are saying about equipping all the ambulances, but, you know, every time you use that device, I would think that that device needs to come out of the truck and be restocked, same way with your, your first-in bags, same way with a lot of things, and so, you know, I struggle with, the most ambulances we have on, on call at one time is seven, and so, and I know you guys are switching some stuff out, and so, I mean, I'm okay with a few extras, and I'm, I'm okay with the supervisor vehicles, but I just, I mean, I feel like we got several ambulances that are, that are sitting mainly at our main base, and only at the main base where we're switching out, I mean, obviously, they're probably running harder, but, you know.
So, you're, so you're thinking a thought process of, of why do we outfit every ambulance with every piece of equipment?
Well, yeah, I mean, so, obviously, when I come on for a shift, I mean, I gotta make sure that I got everything, you know, make sure that my bags are full and everything else, and so. else and so, but, I mean, if I'm ending a shift, you know, maybe I have to take that and maybe I have to restock it and then I sit it there and then I load all my stuff up.
Well, so, so last week, I jumped in an ambulance with another person and we, we ran a call. So, it's, it's useless to, to really have an ambulance and not have equipment on it. So, all seven ambulances are out doing something. I made number eight with, with another, with a part-time employee who happened to be there. You know, a big incident happens, who says number nine, number ten, number eleven are going to be right behind me. Right now, we have an ambulance in the shop. I, I understand, yeah, we can, we can take equipment off, but as quickly as we're switching trucks from back and forth, last night, a shift change, we had a, an issue where a cot was having problems. So, rather than that crew being able to jump in the off-going crew's truck, a call came out just like that, so they had to jump in a spare and go. They don't have time to take everything off the truck and throw it in. In, in my opinion, and I don't, I don't know many ambulance services that, that practice that, but if you're going to have an ambulance, it should all be ready to go at all times if all possible.
Well, I'm not just saying seven. I mean, even if we had ten, ten ambulances ready to go and, and back to my comment earlier is, you know, I haven't seen a transfer van used in I don't know how long and I'm, I'm by there all the time. I mean, maybe I'm passing you and I'm missing you or whatever.
It's, it's on the road right now.
Yes. But, you know, I just know that there's, there's ambulances that we very seldom use unless we have several ambulances down. So, I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that you're not right.
No, I think long-term though, I think with the, with the way that the fleet plan is, is looking, I see those being used a little bit more, especially with, with the eight, one of the aging trucks now going in, replacing it with the one that we have in the back.
So, when we talked to Jerry in the past, he said something about eliminating an ambulance.
That's what he said.
And so, you know, so in my opinion, we shouldn't be outfitting every ambulance because we may be going down an ambulance. So, that's just kind of where I'm coming at.
And the other piece too is, is yeah, you can call it a luxury, but whenever these items do get damaged or contaminated, you know, we can't just restock them, throw them back in. So, being able to grab another one, take everything out, clean it all out and has to have a certain amount of time to, to disinfect and decontaminate. Being able to keep your, your state of readiness is pretty imperative in the operation. Like I said, we can go down to fourteen with that hand-heavy, but being able to, to have that equipment available and on hand is, is pretty important to the job.
I don't disagree. I think every tool that you can have in your bag helps you to do your job better. But at the same time, you have to be flexible enough and you, and just like you said, you know, you're going to have stuff that goes out, you're going to have stuff that has to be cleaned and you're going to, you're going to move stuff around. And so, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you, but you guys are more flexible than any because a stretcher quits and ambulance quits, you know, my, my life pack or whatever quits. I mean, you have got to be able to move stuff from one to the other. So, I'm not saying that we don't need an adequate supply. I'm just wondering what that number is.
Yeah, I agree. I don't want you to jump in an ambulance and answer a call. When you get there.
And you don't have a cot.
And you're missing some, yeah, I, I.
But if you're doing a transfer, you don't need that cot. There's times you're doing transfers, you don't need some of this stuff. So, I, I mean, I think there's ways to back it off a little bit.
So, the van isn't outfitted the same as every other ambulance. Okay, one, just physical room. So, whenever you say you're doing a transfer, you don't need that stuff. There's, there's stuff that we haven't put on that van because we're using it elsewhere. If that's what you're talking about. On, on day-to-day calls, you, you can't, you never know, you could take the most routine or what you would think would be the most routine call and say, well, you don't need all this equipment just for that. That's going to be the time where things turn south on you. It's happened time and time again. Murphy's Law really comes into play. You don't have it, you're going to need it.
Right, but, and I see what you're saying, Kevin, but I mean, as a, in our Q R V or whatever, you're not going to have everything in that Q R V that you might need.
No, we don't, yeah, we don't, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean.
It's typically, it's, it's a first-end bag.
Right.
Is everything out of bags.
Right.
And there's, there's stuff that we carry on the ambulance in addition to.
Right.
Stuff that we carry in the bags, yeah.
So.
You were responding last night, we were going home about twenty after six. The Q R V was going out, we were going out, I guess you had something out fifty east.
It was a busy day.
And you were already gone and then we got down to Dunkland and then here came the ambulance. So, our Q R V, you got, well, of course, you're right there too, but you were there before the ambulance.
Sure.
Wherever you were going.
That's what it's supposed to be for.
Yeah.
That's why it's called a Q R V.
Really?
Response, get there.
Really?
Yeah. So, it should be there all the time.
Yeah, I learn something every day.
Should be there before any fire trucks get there.
If we get the call first. So, are we okay with bidding this stuff? I mean, we, or, or we want to go through one by one or, I mean, some of it, we probably won't even have to bid?
Looking at, the only thing that we're looking to bid is going to be the scoop stretchers, the video laryngoscopes, traction splints and medical bags and the surface sterilizer.
Yeah, you need to get those medical bags.
I mean, with noise to some, is the bid going to be on how many we're getting to? Is it going to be dictated by the quantity or because if, if they're bidding twelve and they're going to give us a price at twelve, but we backing down to, say, we only approve seven, how are we going to bid some of that stuff?
What would you only approve seven on?
I may only approve one or two on some of it and do a little bit at a time. I mean, I mean, when you know there's going to be a pediatric call, you probably have an idea, so you could have that on the Q R V too.
It doesn't work that way. It, it really doesn't. I wish it, I wish we could, but it, it doesn't. You know, we've, we've got a truck that's stationed in Brazito and there's calls where it's up here, running calls at, at the bridge and it's running calls in Centertown. Everything moves around so fluidly that you can't anticipate anything that's going to happen. You know, what if you come across there? You could what-if it forever, but it just doesn't work that way.
Well, I think that's where we're getting to though, is we're what-if-ing everything and we're loading these things down, spending money, spending money, spending money. And we did that last year and here we are again.
And I, and I get it, but, but you're also improving.
Do we have to do this right now or can we wait till middle of the year and let's take a look at it then? I mean, the prices aren't going to increase that much.
We're still going to be under the, what, what you guys talked about for capital.
Until March, then Jerry's going to come in and say, hey, we found this great little deal here that would work great and I'm like, well, you're out of money and then we're the bad guys again because we're saying no and we're not caring about people's safety. And that's as far away from the truth as possible because we have equipped our EMS probably, I, I would compare it to anybody outside of the state.
I, I'm not going to lie.
Pretty much everything y'all wanted in the last two.
There's, there's more things that we carry that other services have and there's other things that other services have that we don't carry. You just, you just kind of look at how you, how you utilize that equipment.
Well, I don't see anything here I'd want to cut back on. I, no, seriously.
I know, that does surprise.
No, but, but the, the Larian, whatever, that scope, I mean, that's a life-saving, you're going to, you're going to say, well, we're only going to get six of them now.
They got the manual, they got the manual one.
Yeah, and I think the, the splints, I think we've got to have the new bags.
I don't disagree on the bags.
Those, we've replaced some. These were, we replaced, we're, this is the final replacement, right?
The bags needs to be an all or nothing.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, if you want to go through one by one, I'll tell you the bags, I'm, I'm absolutely fine with. The Furno, we're doing the rest of those.
Yeah, it's our final.
Kevin, where did we buy six of them already? Did we just tag them?
I don't know.
So, you don't have them on inventory?
Those are probably a carryover. Those are probably a carryover item. It's not something that's been there. I could look, I think probably those have four region numbers on them.
I can look at capital, but it's going to help.
And, I mean, the stuff we're talking about today is just a portion of the capital request. We don't have the radio equipment in there, you know, the reverse nine-one-one. What happens if those come out to be a lot more than what they're wanting to do?
Again, the radio equipment's a different discussion, but from what I have now, I've got radio equipment, which we can talk about, coming out about fifty-five thousand and leaving me about fifty-three thousand to deal with this stuff and this is where I feel we're going to be under on. This is just according to my worksheet.
Because we only had radials at thirty-seven, so.
Yeah, and that's what.
I mean, so, you were good on the Furnco scoop, or the Furno scoop stretchers and then what about the traction splints? I mean, they were over there a hundred and something dollars a piece or something?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how much those were. Those weren't a very expensive item.
We had three thousand.
To me, that, the King Vision air devices or whatever that is, I mean, my only concern is that, you know, is that going to be a, is that a two-year lifespan? I mean, you know, I could, I could see anything electronic like that. I mean, if it gets dropped or whatever, I mean, it could be toast and we're talking about a fifteen-hundred-dollar device and then all these, you know, thirty, forty dollars.
We can look deeper into the warranty and stuff. We just don't know what item because it's just, we haven't bid it yet.
I think they'd probably become obsolete before you, they'd be, you're, you're constantly.
We can, how about this? How about we bid them and just bid them? See what item we go with and then we could really drill down into the specs as far as the, you know, the warranty involved with it, the durability and things of that sort.
Yeah, I mean, that's the kind of thing that I'd be interested in. I mean, obviously, is that, is that video? Is that kind of magnifying what you're seeing to be able to get it?
Yeah, I could, it'd probably be easier for me to demonstrate it. And I don't have to.
On Jeff. Take one for the team.
I might need a big bottle of water.
Okay.
We're not really good for this.
I'm, I'm okay with bidding it, I mean.
If we're going to bid them though, let's bid a single unit price versus a what price break we get at certain quantities or something. Because if we bring these up and the price is fine and maybe we don't do twelve of them at a time, I mean, I understand what you're saying, Kevin.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of this stuff you're looking at, price, price breaks being above fifteen or twenty and some of that, so, I mean, I think we'll.
There's certain things. I mean, I've got different vehicles for going to different jobs and there's one that's got most everything on. But if for some reason I'm not taking it that day, I know there's this stuff that I can throw in this truck and it's going to take care of me for that day. So, I think that's kind of the way, some of this needs to be handled. I don't think everything has to be equipped like that, you know, not every van's going to have everything on it. So, but if you know you're leaving the shop that morning and you're going to be out, well, then you need to throw a little more of your specialized stuff on there, so. And then the batteries too, I think we need to price what batteries going to cost, replacement batteries on the, those are King Vision airway devices. I mean, you're probably going to use those maybe once a year. Let the batteries go up and down on them, so what are they, what's the anticipated life on them? Any kind of maintenance on anything that we're bidding?
Again, I don't know the video laryngoscopes because there's so many, so just see what we get bid on.
Okay.
Bids on. The King Vision is an example. Like I said, there's two or three others in the market that are very identical to it, so. They all have their own special little thing that goes to market.
But really, every call's different, so you really don't know until you get there and you see the patient what you're going to need. So, if you get there and you don't have this, well, yeah, it's on the ambulance here. We can dispatch that ambulance, but you can, in the meantime, the person will die.
So, I'm hearing a yes to go ahead and bid out the video scopes and then we'll see, getting some of those questions answered. Did you guys just, okay with the stretchers?
I'm okay with bidding it all.
They're just bidding it right now.
Yeah, so the things that we're bidding again.
No, we bid it doesn't mean that we're going to.
The, the items that, looking at the hand-heavy and the Elk lift cushion, those don't require bids. The Elk, I'm not, the Elk lift cushion, I'm not sure, I think that's under a thousand or twelve-hundred. I'm not sure what the price of it is on top of the heat of look at the budget. That's under the bid limit for the vendor that's supplying it. And the hand-heavy is a sole source.
So, it'd be a matter of approving the sole source for the hand-heavy? And that was like an eighteen-thousand-dollar?
We could come up next week. I think, I think they sent Jennifer all the sole source stuff. We can come up next week and present that order. But as far as the approval for the bid, it's just the, the stretchers, the laryngoscope, the splints, the bags and the sterilizer.
So, I mean, I realize that you, you think the hand-heavy system is the best system out there and I don't disagree with you, but I mean, I don't like excluding people from bidding because then it's like, okay, well, I just name my price. And so, I mean, maybe it's the best system out there and I'm okay with that. I'm okay with awarding it to the, maybe the highest person too.
There's no distribution network for that system. It, it comes from the, there, there's not a, like, this person sells a hand-heavy system, this person sells a hand-heavy system. It comes from the hand-heavy company.
Right.
So, they have a set? It's all set?
I just, I just feel like we get into a pattern and, you know, just like the life packs or whatever, I mean, those are great units, but there's also other great units that other services are using that aren't life packs. And so, we, we'd say, well, we got to use this because the hospitals use this or whatever. Well, you know, we're using this and M U Medical Center or M U's using something different.
Yeah, there's Phillips or Zoll, there's, there's all sorts of brands out there.
Right.
Everyone's accustomed to their brand. The life pack is what works best for us.
Right.
There's things that those machines do that the life packs don't, we accept it.
Right.
But, I mean, it doesn't make sense for us to change everything over. We have paramedics that work with about every model. You can, you can think of a monitor. They're able to work with that life pack and it's just the, the way the functionality of it. I've got churches calling to get A E Ds and, and they ask, you know, what our recommendation is. And I don't give them a recommendation, but I say, hey, if you get this model A E D, it's compatible with our cardiac monitors. And they base that stuff off of that. It's, it's kind of keeping that consistency with it as well.
I mean, it's just, I get the consistency, but if I supply the product that nobody else could supply, my price is going to be higher. And that's, I mean, if Sam sold tuxedos that nobody else could get, he's going to charge whatever he wants for them. And so, that's, I mean, and I'm not saying that the hand-heavy isn't the best system out there and maybe it is, but I just have a problem with sole sourcing something and buying direct from that person. I mean, it's like, it's a monopoly. I mean, I'm, I'm okay, I'd, I'd just like to see what the others come in at. I mean, maybe you don't like the Broslos and I don't know how old your system is or the Petty Pros. I just kind of like to see where they come in at. I mean, I'm okay with saying hand-heavy pediatric system or equal.
But there's, there's no equal to it. I mean, that's why it's sole source because.
Well, then maybe they won't bid it.
The approach that goes with it, it's, it's totally different. This is a, this is a technique literally created by pediatric physician that is ultimately kind of consuming EMS in, in the way that they are moving forward with their ability to judge dosages and treatments for pediatric patients rather than having to put your nose in a book while you have a pediatric patient right here in front of you. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a different approach to pediatric patients and it's.
You get a measuring tape to help provider determine the age of the pediatric patient too. Maybe we can buy some tape measures for you guys. Maybe we can buy some tape measures for you guys. I'm just looking at it, I'm just, there's, if, you gotta know dosages and stuff, you got two of you there, somebody can be, if you don't know, you can be referring to somebody or something to figure it out.
It's not that easy.
How do y'all determine what an adult gets?
Meas, well, you memorize it.
Okay, so, then memorize it for smaller patients.
Based off their weight and do a calculator, all the formulas? With all due respect, I mean, this is the line of work that I'm doing, and, and I know the ins and outs. I don't know cabinets, landscaping, tuxedos, I don't know that stuff. This is what I do, this is what we're needing.
I know, we're always needing all kinds of stuff, though. And like I said, we spent a buttload last year, and we're gonna do it again this year, so I'm just getting into some of it, just like the vendors.
I think we're still gonna be under, I truly do.
Well, but we're...
We will be under.
Yes, we spent a lot of money last year, but we brought Jerry in to do that, and Jerry, you can't do it all in one year.
To spend money. Brought Jerry in to spend money?
We brought Jerry in to, to revamp EMS, and he's still doing that.
But you can't just keep throwing money at everything to be the best. It's gonna come down to the people.
There's a lot more money that we could spend that we're not coming up with.
Okay.
This is more for our patients. I mean, what you're asking now, this is all the stuff that we...
Don't think that I don't think about that every time we're looking at something, is, is this gonna be my niece or nephew that you're working on, or my parents, or a friend or something? You know, it comes to mind, or, you know, so, to say that, you know, we're not, we're not gonna be the best out there, then you might as well put hospital on wheels and put them in a, in a ER room. So, where you got everything. We, there's some of this stuff, though, we've got stuff that you can do it with. Maybe it's not quite as, you don't have this fancy camera on there and stuff, but, and yes, I think you gotta memorize some of that stuff. I mean, there's certain things I do have memorized, Kevin, there's some things that I have to still look up, but, that's why y'all get paid the money to, or y'all do the job you do, I guess, because you all can handle it. I wouldn't be able to handle that with blood pressure like that, so.
I, I could demonstrate, I could demonstrate to you on a mannequin, the, the video laryngoscope piece, and I could, I could really show you what I'm talking about.
I believe you, I'd...
I really, I really can. And it's probably easier for me to do that, so you could, you can really see, it's not just something that, hey, this is the latest and greatest thing and we, and we need it 'cause it's, you know, got a blinky light on it or something, but, I really can. It's, we have a mannequin that I can, I can show you with, and, and I could really drill down and, and prove to you why I think this would benefit.
Bottom line's gonna come down to the amount of money that y'all got too. I mean, we put it in the budget in capital. And so, pardon me says, okay, y'all get to pick what y'all want.
And that's what we did.
But when you're out of money, you're done.
We removed some other things out of, out of there, so...
But I'm also gonna sit back and say, I don't think you necessarily need fifteen of them or fourteen of them. We can put them in twelve of them, we can save some money that we can put somewhere else. That's gonna help us provide even better service with these things, so. I'm the no guy.
Well, they're done twelve here.
Might only be ten.
I see, I see both sides. I mean, obviously, you need the tools to do the job, and I get that. I mean, there's always gonna be something better and something, some better tool, I mean, I, I see it all the time, I mean, I'm like, man, I really need one of them.
Yeah.
Want or need?
Well, that kinda depends on, I guess, if I got money in my pocket.
You're right, your checks, I'm like a mess. You want it, you got it. But if Billy Bob comes in there and says, "Man, Mr., make my job easier," he tells you, "Need it," and you're going, "No, we got shovel, we don't need a backhoe."
That's true.
All right? So...
You need that laser guide. Tape measure, whatever it is. Shh. You have one, don't you?
I mean, so, I, I wanna give you the tools that you need to do the job, but I'm also looking at, at the budget and the revenues and expenses and all that other stuff, and like Jeff said, we spent a lot of money last year to make that service a whole lot better, and I, I'm for spending money to continue to improve that, but I think we just have to use some, a little bit of restraint there on some of that stuff.
Right, so on the items that, that we, we brought up, we can make do with dropping down to fourteen of the hand heavy, I'm not sure what that will drop, I'll, I'll have to go back to the office and look at the, what that is. Medical bags, I'd really like to stay at that number with them. The, the traction splints, we can, we can phase that in, we, again, that's a lower-cost item. The video laryngoscope pieces, we can probably bump that down to, you know, ten or eleven, but again, for, ultimately, we probably could make do with ten, but I just, I hate taking something off of a truck to use it for training. That's, that's not something that we would necessarily carry on, on a van. But that's why that number's a little lower, and that's something that, yeah, that is a higher-cost item, but...
I mean, I just, I really think that those, those things that go with the video laryngoscope, I mean, I, that concerns me that it's twenty to forty dollars for each time that we use that. I mean, I don't know what your cost for innovating another person is with the old system, I mean, I don't, I mean, I just, I wanna make sure that we're charging for what we're using. I mean, obvi, obviously, if we use something that costs a lot more, that cost needs to be higher, you know?
And that, that's, that's where you get into that higher billing bracket with it.
So, are we ready to bid them? Let them across the calls?
I mean, I, I think we're all okay with bidding all these, I mean, and then the, you know, I think we were good with the Elk lift chair, and then I think it was the hand heavy that was, you know, was sole sourced.
That would be put on the budget, part of the budget, the agenda for next week to talk about for the approval of sole source and such.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know about you guys, but I mean, you know, I've kinda asked you guys, I'd like to see the jackets that you guys purchased, and, you know, I just, I think for me, it's visual on all this stuff, so I mean, I'm gonna bring a mannequin up here and show me how this stuff works, I'm good with that. I mean, I think...
Easier if you go there.
Well, I realize that, but, you know, not only do here, not only do we see it, but it's being video too, so everybody else sees it too. And so, anyway, I just, and I'm not telling you to bring a ton of stuff up here, but, I mean, I can come out, that's no big deal, but it, it makes it easier for us to understand what we're doing.
The, the piece that I'd show you, you wouldn't be able to see with this.
Right.
I saw that jacket that Kemker had living windows. Now, I understand that's not the jacket we're getting, but...
You'll, you'll see them if you do a little...
Yeah, you could, you could, you, those are...
They stand high.
Yeah, and when you're out working a wreck alongside a highway or something like that, I want people to see you.
They should put lights on their trucks or something.
I tell you, you get, you get drunks who, you, you'll, you've seen the videos where they rear end a...
That coat's not gonna help some.
Highway patrol car, they rear end an ambulance, or, you can have all the lights you want, and, and somebody's still gonna...
Yeah, the big thing is stepping out in between, and people are looking at the lights, they don't see the person, but whenever you have something reflective, that's where that...
Okay, so we give you some direction?
So, bid all the stuff, go ahead and get the Elk lift cushion and put on the agenda for the hand heavy sole source.
Yep.
Okay. Do you guys wanna see this on a light at all?
I think I looked at all of it.
Thank you.
Yep.
How's the flu? Are we getting back to normalcy out there at EMS?
Uh, one person gets better, another person goes down, so. Jerry's down right now, he just wanted to be like everybody else.
He just wanted the day off.
How about when you get that sterilizer in?
I gotta bid it first.
They'll be wanting oxygen masks here before long, Sam.
I tell you what, I, I bought a box of those gauze masks, I, I would assume our people are wearing those, aren't they, when...
Flu cases, yeah.
Yeah, I, I...
Pretty cheap ones.
I, I assume we better be wearing them. Okay. Got everything? Close session? We took the legal out. Got personnel issues still?
Yes. Sorry, sir. Not mine. Chris?
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Kevin.
Gotta teach Jerry to get sick to have such a fun meeting like this.
I like it.
Something that I seen the email about was the health department and the sun situation. I don't know if you want me to put that on the agenda or what that was about.
I think she's probably trying to use that grant she's got, 'cause there's a certain window, doesn't she have to use it by like May? And so, I would assume that's what that is, but again, I, I don't know, so we probably oughta get a, get a clarification, but I think that's, we, we talked about how she could use that grant, and something like this would qualify.
And I didn't know if she was just trying to get an estimate, 'cause this is an estimate from a vendor, so.
Maybe check with her and see.
Okay. And, and so, I think the ice maker situation at Juvenal's gonna take...
They're gonna get a little, little bitty ice maker that's counter.
Okay.
On, on the counter.
Get some of them plastic trays.
Are we still done first? Are we still...
Yeah, yeah.
We got two-liter bottles, we get done with your soda, you rinse them out and we can freeze them.
Okay.
After sterilize.
I'll make a motion, we go into a closed session pursuant to section six-ten-dash-zero-two-one, other rights statutes of Missouri. The commission will go into closed session to discuss the following: personnel issues,
Second.
Roll call.
Sam?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Oh, man, I was gonna bring up motion, have Chris shave his beard. Jennifer asked us to drive you...